Here, so let's get started. Call the order of the regular meeting. Village of East Dundee dated Monday, April fifteenth at twenty 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 one at six P M. Catherine, could you call the roll, please?
Lineham.
Here.
Trustee Sella.
Here.
Trustee Wood. Trustee Mahoney.
Here.
Trustee Andreessen.
Here.
Trustee Coonsey.
Here.
And President Miller.
Here. We will forego the pledge of allegiance and move directly on to public comment on agenda items only. Do we have anybody that would like to address the board at this time? Okay, seeing none, first order of business this evening. We could have a motion to open a public hearing for the signs on Prairie Lakes.
I make a motion to open a public hearing for a request for a variance from chapter one five six signs of the East Dundee Village Code to allow for one wall sign for Chicago Nut and Bolt, one forty-five Prairie Lake Road, East Dundee, Illinois, six zero one one eight.
Very good. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, public hearing is, let's, yeah, we can vote.
Trustee Lineham.
Oh, yes.
Trustee Sella.
Just.
Yeah.
Trustee Mahoney.
Yes.
Trustee Andreessen.
Yes.
Trustee Coonsey.
Yes.
And President Miller.
Yes. Okay, very good. Public hearing is now open on the variance for the signs. Do we have anybody that would like to address the board?
We have to leave it open for a certain length of time regardless of.
Not really.
Okay.
No, I think, President Miller, I think you could simply note that the application was received and that all the materials were distributed in the board packet and had been considered by the village prior to closing the hearing.
Very good. We'll make it so. Okay. Well, on a public comment on this, I'll ask for a motion to close the public hearing.
So.
Second.
Very good.
Trustee Lineham.
Yes.
Trustee Sella.
Yes.
Trustee Mahoney.
Yes.
Trustee Andreessen.
Yes.
Trustee Coonsey.
Yes.
And President Miller.
Yes. Okay, that takes us to the consent agenda. Who fills up to the Herculean task of reading this one this evening?
I, I'll take it. I'll make a motion, A, item A, make a motion to approve a regular village board meeting minutes dated March first, twenty twenty one. Item B, motion to approve regular village board meeting minutes dated March fifteenth, twenty twenty one. Item C, a motion to approve special committee of the whole meeting minutes dated March fifteenth, twenty twenty one. Item D, a motion to maintain the confidentiality of all closed session meeting minutes previously approved but not released. Item E, a motion to approve a resolution approving a requested, a request for a permit to close state Illinois, state of Illinois highway, state route seventy-two from the village, from the Illinois Department of Transportation in connection with the annual memorial day. One. Item F, a motion to approve an ordinance authorizing the seating of private activity bonding authority. And that would be it.
I'll second.
All right, Catherine.
Uh, can I, I have one question. The item D, uh, no, I'm sorry, that's not it. Item C, the special committee meeting minutes, that was, is that essentially approving the budget?
It's approving the minutes.
The minutes of, okay, okay, got it. Okay, that's good.
Catherine.
See Lineham.
Yes.
Trustee Sella.
Yeah.
Trustee Mahoney.
Yes.
Trustee Andreessen.
Yes.
And Trustee Coonsey.
Yes. I, I'm sorry, I'm, I have another one here, might have misstepped here. Item F, that motion to approve ordinance authorizing the seating of private activity bonds, that's for the, uh, that Illinois River Authority. Um, I had a question about that, and this is probably not the time to ask, since we've gone ahead and ceded that bonding authority to them in the past, but just so I can get a better understanding, we go ahead and give them the opportunity to bond out for projects that they want to take advantage of, and the state of Illinois is going to back that bond for the river authority using the amount that we agreed to cede to them. Now, the state of Illinois backs that in the event that they default, but in the event that they don't, they go ahead and they borrow this money and they're going to pay it back to the banks, whoever, but the bank, like I say, the state backs it. What, where is the source of the revenue to pay that loan back? Because they're not a taxing body. If they were, they wouldn't be asking for this. And so I'm just kind of curious, Greg, do you know? Jennifer, do you? I mean, who, who is it? Where is it that they, I mean, if they go ahead and, and make a bond um, to, you know, perform whatever projects that they want to do, they've got the amount that we cede to them and every other municipality cedes to them, that limit of authority to do that. So that's great. Now they can bond, they can bond out for X amount of dollars. And like I say, the state backs it, and that's fine. But if they default, the state picks it up, which means we pick it up. But if they don't default, that means they're paying it back. And if they are paying it back, what is the source of the revenue they're getting to pay that back?
Well, um, it's my understanding these are private activity bonds, um, and that they're actually backed by the develop, the private development. They're not, it's not my understanding that the state of Illinois has authorized to back these bonds. It's just that they are allowing, um, private entities to use a tax exempt nature for the bonds to get like more favorable bonds. So the funding is not, the state of Illinois is just allowing that to occur. Um, it's not my understanding that state of Illinois in any way is backing these bonds. Catherine, uh, did work with the River Valley Development Authority to get a lot more information this time, because it's always been a little, um, ambiguous, I thought. Um, did they say anything further, Catherine, about that, or is that the extent that you understand as well?
My understanding as well.
Well, okay, I don't want to beat it up. I'm just thinking, and if they're, if they are actually going to take on for tax purposes, a tax exempt status, then that makes them basically, I mean, if they're using, it, it seems to be blurring the line between, you know, what is and what isn't a public entity.
I believe that's the call for those state reps to worry about.
Yeah, okay.
Okay. All right. Where are we here? We've passed the consent agenda.
Are, are we still in the middle of the roll call on that?
Or do we vote? I don't know.
I voted, and I think I'm the last one usually, so I think we finished. Is that correct?
It was voted.
Yeah. Okay, yeah.
Okay.
Sorry, I didn't need to throw a wrench in the works.
Okay, takes us to item seven A. If I have a motion to approve the sign variation.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve an ordinance approving a sign variation from chapter one to six signs of the East Dundee Village Code to allow for one wall sign for Chicago Nut and Bolt, one forty-five Prairie Lake Road, East Dundee, six zero one one eight.
Second.
Okay.
No.
Discussion.
This is the new building that's going to be right off of sixty-eight, right?
All right, no, Chris, do you want to highlight where that location is?
Yeah, no, it's, it's, uh, actually, the, uh, it's going to be the second building in on the west side. It's, uh, the building's up and they're occupying the space already.
Okay.
They just needed to sign. Yule Van Carriers is going to be the trucking facility on sixty-eight and Prairie Lake.
Okay, good. Discussion.
But is, is it just signs, a size rather?
No, it's just the fact that M one zoning does not have any type of signage in the ordinance, so we need to go through this. Well, this is essentially the same issue that came up for Caterpillar then, right? Right, correct.
Okay.
Yeah, see, the, the, the Palumbo Terra Business Park, when that was, uh, development agreement was drawn up, they included all the sign verbiage for all the B districts in that agreement. So for that, uh, industrial park, even though it's M one, we don't have to go through this process.
Okay.
Good enough.
Catherine.
See Lineham.
Yes.
Trustee Sella.
Yes.
Trustee Mahoney.
Yes.
Trustee Andreessen.
Yes.
And Trustee Coonsey.
Yes.
All right, very good. If we could have a motion on item seven B.
I make a motion to approve an ordinance in the Village of East Dundee, Cook and Kane County, Illinois, amending the number of Class A liquor licenses for the distance social.
Do we have a second? All right, discussion on this?
Did this go through the Liquor Commission? Or did it have to?
No.
It's not a new type of license, obviously, so.
Right.
We're just, so we're just amending, adding to the number that we are of a license we already issued.
That was correct.
Okay. All right.
I think you all saw, um, Joe Zeller is on the phone, he's on the Zoom. Uh, if anybody has any questions for him, or if you want to hear about his business plan.
Did anyone tear the document that I sent to the village?
Yeah, we do have that, Joe.
All right, and Scott, I know you're the aficionado, so I'm going to be picking your brain if you guys give me the go ahead on this one.
Be happy to help.
Beautiful. Beautiful design.
Yeah, no, I think this will be a great addition to our downtown.
Good. Catherine.
See Lineham.
Yes.
Trustee Sella.
Yes.
Trustee Mahoney.
Yes.
Trustee Andreessen.
Yes.
And Trustee Coonsey.
Yes.
All right, very good, Joe. You're all set. When do you get your sign up?
Uh, soon. Got to clear that building out, and if anyone's interested in stuff that's in my dad's building, like old antique cases, Lael, you might want to go in there, but I can open it tomorrow and let anybody in there, but it's, it's going to be shut down soon.
Always want to take a look.
There's some neat stuff in there.
Cool. All right, very good. Thank you so much. Um, financial reports, you have the warrants list in your packet. Um, I'll go first on this. Other than the beautiful weather, I really have nothing to talk about, except we talked about this briefly just before the meeting, so just to be clear for anybody that's watching, we did this little publication last year. It's got a map of all the village on the front, has a list of all the events on the back. Um, just in full disclosure, I had asked if we're going to be doing that again, and the answer was yes. I would like to, um, just ask a question, and I don't even know who this is directed at, I guess at this point it's Jennifer. Uh, speaking from personal experience, I mean, I picked up hundreds of these things, because obviously we printed these right before COVID, um, back in March of last year. And, you know, the world changed and all the events happened, but I pass out dozens of these every week in my shop, because people are always coming in saying, hey, where can I get something to eat, where can I, what else, what other places are in town? So I find it very, very helpful, and it's, it's really well done, but I, it, it tends to pose the question, as painful as this is for me, because we've tried this before, um, before we actually publish this, is there, and I know the answer is yes, is there a way that we can reach out to West Dundee and say, hey, we've got this high quality publication that we're going to be putting out for all the stores? Um, and, and just to give you an example, so you, I don't know if you can see this very clearly on here, you can see the line stops at the river and it doesn't show any other businesses. Um, people come into my store and they go, okay, what's, you know, are there other places like yours? And then I have to draw on the map, okay, go over to West Dundee, and you know, there's two other places that you might be interested in. So I, I guess I'm asking the question, can we have the discussion with them once again at least, and say, are you willing to kick in something for this? Um, to help split the cost and, you know, be fair.
You know, just, um, just so you know as well, um, Lael, there were, I, I think the biggest, as somebody that's going to probably end up executing if there is an interest, you know, who is our target audience? Is it walkable distance? Are we trying to go all the way to, to, you know, Spring Hill, because?
No, my, my answer would be it's going to be the downtown, it's going to be walkable. That's what this is focused, focused on.
Okay.
I, I, you know, there's, there's another similar business to mine that's out on thirty-one and seventy-two. I'll send people there, but I'm not going to do it on this map. It's, it's not even all inclusive of, of East Dundee. Right? So I'm just considering the downtown walkable for this. There's other means to address that. Um, and I don't think you can fit it on a, anything bigger than this.
Right, okay.
So that would be my comment is at least just to ask and find out if there's a way that, uh, um, we can get some buy-in from them, because I, like I said, personally, I use this all the time, and I think people find it really helpful. And if they say no, they say no. It's not going to cost, it's not going to cost us anymore, so, you know, you guys make the determination.
No, I think it's definitely worth asking. I mean, I've gone on walks and ended up in Bamboozles, so, I mean, it makes perfect sense to have extra, the additional places on there.
Yeah, yeah, and most downtown visitors don't know whether they're in east or west Dundee, they don't care. So, you know, while our pride is always going to be East Dundee number one, um, I just think it, you know, from a tourist slash visitor, visitor point of view, which is really what these are geared for, I think it would be helpful for the public. Anyway, that's my comment.
Can I jump in on that?
Yeah.
Is there a possibility of getting that thing, it's a two-sided card, but actually almost like, like a, maybe a smaller poster, like a placard type of thing?
Well.
The business owners can stare window, because people are always poking their face in my window to see what I've got written on the window, or to see what I've got sitting on the shelves behind my office.
Yeah, when we talked about doing, um, the, the wayfaring and the downtown signage, um, when we talked about a couple of monuments on either side of, whether it's the bike path or River Street or whatever, I'm not sure where the placement was on that. Um, I think one of the things that I had pointed out early in my discoveries was, um, the signage and wayfaring that Glenn Allen did downtown, and one side was basically, and we're talking about a marquee um, monument sign, they were cast iron and beautiful, but each one probably had a two by three foot opening under glass and they were lit, and on one side there was a map very similar to this that showed all the places that were in the downtown by category, and on the other side were all the events, and obviously they could be changed out seasonally. So I think that we could look at multiple formats for this. I don't know about wallet size or eight by seven, you know, but, but yeah, I think, I think as we get the design on this, we need to be thinking about, you know, can we do something like that?
Yeah, and again, even if it's something that's just going to go into a monument, if we just print a few extra for business owners that like, you know, just for like people that walk, walk by the front of our businesses down here, either on.
Yep.
Street or, or, uh.
Yep. The best example I can think of on that one is if you look at the depot, we have those glass cases on the outside where they have all the post-it notes and everything else, and you know, yeah, it looks a little cluttery, but I wouldn't mind putting up something like this there as a permanent fixture, even if we had to, you know, go out and buy another Plexiglas case for it. I think it's useful, and I think we could get something in there that's backlit fairly easily. Not in the budget, I know, we didn't talk about that, but. So, okay.
It's the next year's budget, so.
Yeah.
We got it covered.
Have to lay that out, once you figure it out, once you get all the, the takers.
Hmm, yeah. Okay, good. Um, so yeah, that's, that's it for me. We'll go around the board and see what everybody else has got to offer this evening. Trustee Coonsey?
Um, I saw on the, uh, weekly reports, um, bi-weekly reports, that, uh, we're talking about putting wayfinding signage by the bike trail to have people park at the caboose lot, which I think is awesome. I wonder though, do we also want to do maybe a sign that says, uh, you know, stop at East Dundee and eat at, list some places, you know, have a drink at, list some places. They'd have to be removable, I guess, so that we can, uh, change as businesses change, but we want to advertise for our businesses on the bike trail with signage, uh, to tell bikers, I know other towns do this.
Yeah.
A lot of towns also have a map posted. You're talking about this map right there. A lot of towns have a map posted in their downtown on the bike trail.
Yeah.
You know, similar to what you're talking about with businesses mapped out on, on the thing, so.
Yeah.
That's something else to think about when we're thinking about maybe, uh, you know, whatever signage else we're talking about.
Yeah, we don't, we have to re-undert the wheel here. Lots of other towns have done this really well.
Yeah.
So, agreed. All right.
We might even be able to get, uh, well, we might be able to get, uh, the Forest Preserve to give us a, you know, at least a trail map for the downtown. Um, I know there is, there are some trail maps along the trail that are provided by the Forest Preserve.
Hmm.
Uh, so they might be interested in that as well, especially if we become, if we're posting parking, uh, you know, as a spot where people are coming in with their cars and parking and getting on the trail there, uh, might be nice to have a map there.
That would be a good location, yep. Okay, anything else this evening? Trustee Coonsey, anything else?
Oh, no, sorry, that, that's all.
No problem. Trustee Mahoney.
Um, uh, thank you, uh, Phil and, and Joe and everybody else that worked on kind of a recap of the status of Bonnie Dundee. And, um, I would like to take a look further, put it on the agenda sometime in the future about what we need to do and the viability of making this a no-truck street, a no-truck zone street, um, since we've got North Avenue already as a no-truck zone. Um, and the safety issues are bigger on Bonnie Dundee and possibly usage of bikes going down the trail, um, from twenty-five down to the bike trail. Um, it's, it's, um, pretty, um, it's a beautiful ride and it's a beautiful walk, but it's also has its own inherent dangers that are much different than what North Avenue is. Um, and I think to some degree it could also create more of, um, a safety, a feeling of safety for the people that do use it, so that it would increase the usage of it as, as a walkable, rideable, um, uh, route down to the downtowns of Carpentersville, East Dundee, the river, um, and that, and the like, so.
Good point. Um, Joe Heinz, do we have a, um, map that we publish with, um, the no-truck routes, any place that you're aware of?
Not that I'm aware of, no. Just in the ordinance is where.
Okay, um, would it be possible for somebody to provide that to the board so that we can at least give this an overview? I'm not opposed to the idea at all, Kathleen, it's just every time you move water, it's going to find its way to go someplace else, and we know that. Because every time we do something like this, the trucks go down another route, then we start hearing from those people.
Yeah, absolutely, um. Yeah, no problem.
So if we can have somebody put together just a map that shows what the, what the no-truck routes are, then we can look at it from a more holistic approach, I believe.
And I'd be interested in, in understanding also, you know, what, what were the drivers to make North Avenue and no-truck route? Or North Street.
I guess it would be complaint. But, okay, anything else, Kathleen?
That's it.
Trustee Lineham.
No report.
Trustee Sella.
No report.
Trustee Andreessen.
No report.
Very good, let's move on to staff. Administrator Johnson.
Um, just a couple of items, um, since we touched on the signage a little bit, um, so we do have that in the budget, so we will bring that and a few other ideas, including trustee Coonsey's ideas to, back to a general village committee, um, once we have one established. Um, and then also, um, you can see that the event schedule was released, and we have applications out there for, um, liquor and food vendors, um, and so we're going to bring that back to, um, the events committee, uh, once that's established as well, to uh, make those decisions. So I just want to make sure if you hear any talk about that, um, we have a lot of businesses out there, we have a lot of spots, but we're going to try to accommodate everybody, but we will, I'll bring that back to that board committee to make that decision, um, and that's my only report.
Very good. Building department.
No report.
All right, police.
No report.
That's always good. Police attorney.
None for me this evening, thank you.
All right, public works.
No report.
Village engineer.
No report.
Joe, I got a question for you. I had a comment from a resident the other day that, uh, I know we talked about this, but my memory is vague on it, because it was probably ten to twelve years ago, Jeff, you might remember this. Conversation regarding, um, speed limits on Water Street between East Dundee River Street, basically, or, um, seventy-two going all the way north to Carpentersville where it changes to Washington. Um, speed limit is thirty in East Dundee and twenty-five in Carpentersville. And I remember being told at the time, by who I don't remember, that it was because it was some kind of a special routing, because that was a, uh, secondary feeder or something in case of damage or destruction of thirty-one or something where people had to get access from one town to the other. Do you remember that?
Sure. Water Street is part of a FAU route that would connect Carpentersville to, uh, seventy-two.
Okay.
But I don't believe the, the speed limit is requirement, and we didn't have to do a speed survey to change it, I don't know, it's just.
It, it didn't make sense to me that if that was the, the actual answer, that Carpentersville could post their speed limit at thirty, and we can post, or, I'm sorry, twenty-five hundred hours at thirty. Um, so I'm guessing if we could put this on a future agenda, I would like to see this item on there for the board to look at as to, um, changing the speed limit from seventy-two up until it hits Carpentersville. I don't know what that is, is that Illinois Street? And make that a twenty-five, so if we have to get traffic counts or whatever we have to do on that, um.
That's Washington.
Unless anybody's got any objection at this point.
No.
Okay.
You're talking about just making it twenty-five all the way through?
Well, twenty-five through all of East Dundee, because like I said, it's thirty now in East Dundee and twenty-five Carpentersville, and doesn't sound like there's a valid reason for that. The neighbors basically are saying, hey, we'd like, and again, as I explained it to the neighbors, just because we say it's twenty-five doesn't mean that they're not going to do thirty or thirty-five, but that's also our. Okay. Um, so that concludes staff report. Unless I missed anybody, yell at me now. So that takes us to public comments on non-agenda items. If there's anybody that would like to address the board? Mr. Kias.
Mr. President, thank you, board members. Uh, yeah, just to update, we now have, I, I'm sure you're well aware, we have a max, mass vaccination site in Batavia at the Old Sands Club, and we are continuing to look for other sites in Elgin and North. Uh, it's an active search, so hopefully within the next couple, three weeks, we'll have more places to do vaccinations in this end of the county. Um, as far as the signs on the, the path go, let me know if there's anything I can do to help with the Forest Preserve.
Appreciate that. Well, Chris, as long as you're good.
Not that I can't, yeah, not, not that I can't help, but I, I'll do my best.
I appreciate that. Um, since you're here, um, my understanding is that the opportunity for a vaccination site at the big lots was next just because of the fact that there was a cost involved with that? There was a.
I don't believe it was just the cost.
Okay.
I, I think they're, putting together one of these vaccination sites is really complicated. There's a, a lot of moving, uh, a lot of moving pieces. It's not as simple as just setting up. Uh, we're working, we were working with the National Guard, and I, I believe it was the National Guard that had initially said they wanted to push really hard up north, and then they decided that the one would be enough. Um, but don't quote me on that, I'm not exactly on that committee, that's just what I've gathered. Uh, but we are, we're looking for other sites. It wouldn't be as large, I don't believe, as say the, the max vaccine, vaccination site, but hopefully it'd be more like two or three different, uh, locations, Elgin and Carpentersville.
So could I suggest that Kane County, whoever is doing this, whether it's the Health Department or the board in large, um, that if you have a fact sheet or a spec sheet that shows the size of the building, uh, or anything else that you're looking for, that you put together that data and send it out to the mayors in your county? Um, because it's possible that somebody's going to have an abandoned Walmart, or abandoned Domino's, or abandoned something else, and has a relationship with that landlord. Um, I know for a fact I ended up getting my first shot last week out in Rockford, and they had a business owner there with an abandoned Kmart, and he leased it to them for a year for a dollar, and spent forty thousand dollars of his own funds to fix the place up for him. Not to say that we're going to be that generous, but, um, you never know what you're going to find. I mean, it would be nice to have some representation up north, and frankly, for me, it's forty-five minutes to Batavia or forty-five minutes to Rockford, so I don't care, but just if you're looking.
Pain for me.
Yeah, if you're looking for space, we're obviously looking for something more on the north side. Um, I would just offer.
I'll, uh, Chris Allen is our, uh, new, uh, building maintenance supervisor, executive, um, and he's, uh, in the active search up in this area, so I will make sure that I contact him and.
Yeah, I don't know if it's.
Get ahold of you.
As to choose a site or the National Guard.
Well, it's, it's not just one person or one group to decide, it's a, it's a group effort, uh, depends on where the vaccines are coming from and who, and a big part of it's who can staff it. Because right now, I think they're not, they're getting, catching up on vaccines, but. Because right now I think there's not, they're getting, catching up on vaccines, but I think what's, what's happening is the, a lot of, uh, they're having a tough time finding enough people to actually staff them and keep them open.
Okay.
Qualified to give the shot.
All right, that was my only comment. Okay, anybody else like to address the board? All right, we have no executive session this evening, so at this point I'll ask for a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Second.
Very good. Catherine.
Lyman.
Yes.
Trustee Selah.
Yes.
Trustee Mahoney.
Yes.
Trustee Andreessen.
Yep, yes.
Trustee Kuntzey. And President Miller.
Yes.
Sorry, that was a yes on that, if that wasn't clear.
All right, folks, thanks for showing up this evening and doing your jobs. We'll talk to you next week or the week after. Uh, enjoy the nice weather out there, and we will see you later. Thank you.
Good night, guys.
Bye.